Tom.
Okay, then. I don't know.
Rebecca.
Hi, how's it going?
Oh, one day at a time.
Yep. That's for sure.
Tom, can you hear me? Can't hear you. It shows you're off mute, but still can't hear you. No, it sounds funny. No, it sounds like you've been taking some helium. You may have to log off and log back on again.
Hey, guys, how's it going?
Trying to get Tom squared in here. Hey Lance.
Robert, hi Becky, hi Steve, hi Neva.
Hey Lance.
How are y'all today?
Good, how are you doing?
Doing well.
Tom's audio was acting up, I told him to log off and then try logging back in again and we'll see where we get. Okie dokie.
I would like Chipmunk.
Rebecca can vouch for me.
Yep. We were, we were, uh, named by Theodore the Chipmunk, I think.
Does it sound any better now, Robert?
Uh, yeah, about 100%.
Okay. Steve, good evening.
Tom, good evening, how are you?
Well, I'm up right.
Good. That's better than the opposite, right?
Absolutely.
Some days I wonder.
Every day I'm able to get up and get out of bed is a good day.
Is Linda here?
It's supposed to be Cheryl, I think.
So I see her as an attendee, um, I'm not sure if she got the wrong invite or what. So are you on the call, Kyle?
Yeah, I'm on the call, can you hear me?
Yeah, trying to figure out how to switch Cheryl over. As a panelist or a participant.
Okay, she'll be rejoining soon here as a panelist.
Okay.
There anybody else who needs to be a panelist?
I don't think so.
We got everybody here. Cheryl taking notes then tonight.
Yeah.
Hey Phil, can you hear me?
I'm here, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
Okay, this is Cheryl.
Alright.
Cheryl, this is Tom, welcome to the P&amp;Z Board.
Thank you, I'm very pleased to be here and hope that I can make you all proud.
Well, I don't think we have anything to worry about that, you come highly recommended by Linda.
Yeah, well, thank you, she, um, she's a good teacher.
Alright Cheryl, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item of business is the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag. First item then is the approval of the minutes of last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have a one, um, edit to make if, if that's okay, and then I would with that edit move to approve.
Okay, what's your comment?
Um, in our packet, page four, paragraph one, line two, it says that, um, I had concern about the easements being shown, the, the easements were shown, I, I wanted the utility shown. Because, um, although improbable easements can be moved and changed, so I just wanted the utility shown. Because obviously you can't really move a major water line, major sewer line of that nature. Easements can be adjusted, but if there's already a utility within the easement. That, that's what I was saying, so basically just changing the word easement to utilities is, is what I was requesting. And with that edit, I would move that we approve the minutes of the meeting.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
There we go, a motion and a second, Cheryl, did you get that adjustment?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you Cheryl.
You bet. Ready to vote?
Uh, yeah, we'll go ahead and, and any other further discussion?
Okay, Candelaria?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
And Remy?
Yes. Looks like we only have one item for business this evening, and that's the, county development, uh, just north of Road L and Alamosa, and Neva, would you?
Yeah, um, okay, let me share my screen with y'all. And, there, okay. Alright, um, so we got this county project for review last week, Jared and Colette Wyatt have applied to the county for an eight lot major subdivision. On property located at 26833 Road L. This property consists of 40 acres and is just on the north side of, um, Road L and the, city-owned right-of-way Alamosa Road. The eight lots range in size from three acres to 13.7 acres, and the property is located immediately adjacent to the city of Cortez. The proposed driveway for this subdivision would intersect with the Alamosa, the city-owned portion of the right-of-way there. Um, the application indicates that the new road access. For the city of Cortez Public Works Department has indicated that the project may be in the city service area. Um, and they may need to approach the city for water service. Uh, in addition, the access to the city street has not been discussed with applicants and the Public Works Department will need to approve that access onto the, um, city maintained right-of-way. Um, so the layout is in confirmation with the master street plan. However, there are some outstanding issues with the, the water service and access to a city street. We haven't seen a plat to review, uh, this particular map calls itself a, a final plat, but that's not the case. Uh, there is a water line, if you can see my cursor, there's a water line that runs something like this, a city name, um, we'll need to make sure that that shows up on the final plat for this project. Um, the plat will have to include a signature line for the, for the city water. And it'll need to show that water easement on there. If this subdivision goes with the city water, um, they will need to sign a pre-annexation agreement, for, uh, out-of-service water. And we recommend that the subdivision have any necessary access permits to access the city-owned right-of-way. Um, so the report included in your packet had the suggestion to table this project, but there are a couple of other things, um, that we can do, you guys can um, make the motion to authorize the chairman to sign compliance with the master street plan. But condition it that the city council must approve the out-of-city water tap, um, and the pre-annexation agreement. And that the subdivision, uh, have any of the necessary permits to access the city-owned streets. Um, and you can authorize city staff to, uh, write the county a letter with all of, um, the outstanding issues for this project as well, so. Um, I think I'll just leave that at that, and we can, we can discuss this further, and how you guys want to handle, this particular project.
Hey Neva, I've got a quick question in regard to the water.
Hmm?
I looked at their application to Monazuma County, and it says that their service provider is going to be Monazuma Water Company. So, as long as our, the city water line is running across the property, if Monazuma Water Company can service this property, then it's a non-issue there, correct?
Um, it should be, although Phil Johnson, our Public Works Director, uh, did indicate that this was, um, part of the service area for city water.
Yeah, I can address that if I could.
Okay.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Candelaria, I did talk to the point for this project. And, um, you know, it is accurate that we do bisect that 13.7 acre lot on the eastern port, part of the subdivision. If you look right at Alamosa Road, you can see those barns and that big parcel, and there's a driveway just a little bit to the west that's straight across from Center Street. That's where our, our main, that's where our water, one of our transmission lines bisects that. But we also run east and west on Alamosa, and I did speak, uh, like I said, to the project reps, uh, it was, uh, yesterday, and I think Friday we emailed as well, um, about them getting service from us, and they intend to, and I did forward them, uh, the construction and design standards, the out-of-city water tap, and the annexation, the pre-annexation agreement, towards that end, so, um, we have worked, uh, with that, and, and they are going to be getting water from us, and I did talk to, Monazuma Water Company, uh, specifically to address this, and they're, uh, okay with that as well.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, just the reason why I ask is because on their application to the county, it said Monazuma Water. Right, right. Thank you, yes.
Neva saw the way, and I just felt the, could you take your mouse and draw a line across there again, so to speak, of where the pipeline runs?
So here, here's, here's the pipeline running right through this blue line here, so that's a big, um, 10-inch water line.
I don't see where you marked Neva.
I don't, yeah, I don't see your mouse.
Oh, you're not seeing, oh, okay.
Okay, okay. Right through there.
So right.
And then ends up at Center Street, over here to the left a little more in the field, Neva.
Okay, gotcha.
Straight across from Center Street, and then draw a line from there, that bisects between that pond and the home site to the, in the upper right-hand corner. That's the angle of that main, but that is a transmission, uh, main that has, it's a 16-inch that we slip line with a 12-inch HDPE. And that top, tapping that would be problematic, and we wanted to get them to take, uh, water off the 20-inch line. It's on Alamosa, that'll help us keep that, uh, that water fresher with this, uh, new demand there in that section town.
So if the.
Okay, do you see this, do you see it now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, gotcha.
Here's the water line, and then here's the other water line running along Alamosa down here.
So if there needs to be a repair on that one going through that large lot, how is that handled?
Uh, access via utility easement.
So if I was going to build a house there, I wouldn't want to put it right on top of the water line, would I?
No, you wouldn't, I wouldn't want you to either.
Then is there one tap fee to tie in, and then each one of the lots would have a tap fee also?
Well, with regards to something like this, the, the subdivision, the developer would put the infrastructure in, uh, dedicate an easement for that water line, and then convey that to us, and when we would then operate and maintain it. And there are no fees for that, other than the overall, just the installation costs. And then as they subdivide and develop this parcel, these parcels, they can purchase those taps individually for the lots. But, uh, you know, of course, they're going to have to sign up for, uh, at least one tap and, and a pre-annexation, I don't know how that would actually work, uh, Neva. With a subdivision of this type, we don't need to charge these guys, uh, for all the tasks immediately.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
Okay, thank you, um, since this subdivision proposal is directly adjacent to city, the city property, and, um, they're going to be serviced by city water, why aren't they required to annex?
Um, well, I don't, that's a good question, but you know, the only mechanism I have to sell out of the city, uh, a tap is for an out-of-city tap and a pre-annexation agreement. Um, I, I do not move the mechanism for, um, you know, for annexation, and I, I wouldn't.
I was just curious, because. Yeah, everywhere else I've ever worked, um, if this were to come forward, there would be something in the municipal code that would trigger a requirement for, um, providing water that, and the annexation be a condition.
Well, for me, I mean, if, if I were developing this, I would look at that and the overall cost of the increased fees for out-of, out-of-city taps. And look at that cost benefit analysis versus the cost of annexation, you know, and bringing that in, I mean, and also, you know, the annexation takes, takes time. And we don't know what their timeline is for development, and trying to turn this over and make this a viable pro, a project, so, you know, there's that, those considerations as well, man.
Yeah, I guess just, um, something that maybe the city leadership should consider too, is that, um, you, you know, uh, an increase in density like this adjacent to town, even though this one's not too significant, um, does have, have an impact on city services in the long run, so, um, that's why annexation is usually a desirable preference.
Right.
Just wanted to point that out.
So. So even if we would happen to table this, and like Stephen said, on the application to the county, then you're looking at the Monazuma water. What if the, I believe the county is meeting February 11th, is that correct, Neva?
Alright, next week, I think.
I.
Two weeks.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Um, I, for me personally, I don't feel comfortable completely tabling this, just for the simple fact of, you know, we, we, we meet once a month. They're probably trying to move this thing along, so I would be more inclined to say, let's, uh, let's, uh, make the recommendation to allow the chair to sign the signature block for conformance with the master streets plan. And then, um, you know, if, again, it, with the application saying Monazuma Water, and Phil, I know you talked to them, and they, I guess you said, and that they're gonna go with the city of Cortez, but whichever way they decide to go, um, you know, it may, may change things, so obviously it conform, conforms with the master street plan, we can have that portion of it, and then we can say that there's a stipulation that, you know, any other things have to be met if they choose to move forward with city of Cortez water.
So the way services area, area, like when you have a defined service area, it's not really a choice, it's a defined service area, so they, if, if they're in the city's defined service area, they can't go with Monazuma, correct?
Well, that, well, yeah, um, there's actually a few blocks of, of, or parcels, I should say, that are outside of the city limits. That do not have Monazuma Water Company water lines, either bisecting them or adjacent, and so they are, they are not earmarked either way. They're in a no-man's lo, zone, and so I went and I went and talked to, uh, Mr. Steve Bowman at the Monazuma Water Company about, uh, the, the two parcels that are north of Brandon's Gate, that are on either side of Brandon's Boulevard that goes to L. Um, we provide water service to the one on the east, on the one on the west, no. And then there was this parcel that is out of the city limits, but still not in Monazuma Water Company's service area. And when, where we serve everyone on 145 going north, almost all the way up to County Road M, because they have no water line, so I went and talked to Steve about these three areas, and, you know, you know, because I understand there's, you know, there's some mileage between the water company and the city historically, I want to see that go away, because I just want us to work cooperatively together and just serve water to our, our, you know, our valley, and so, um, he agreed that, yeah, I, these are, these are, these three parcels that we spoke specifically about, you know, didn't affect their, their service areas, not going to impact, um, you know, their development rights, and, and, and we're not trying to encroach on theirs, which I don't want to do, I just want to provide water where it's, it's feasible and logical, and it's beneficial to us and our customers, so. I feel confident that we're okay here, um, with regards to serving them, and, uh, that's what I, the, the intention has been conveyed to me from the developer.
Neva, could you go back?
So on your, on your screen, I have another alternative that Tracy and I worked on, um, this afternoon. As a motion you guys can do, and then there's also, on the table, we can, uh, compile a letter with some of the outstanding issues as well, so. So I'm not sure, at this point, there's a a reason to table this, um, when there's an alternative that might cover up everything.
Okay, well, I tend to agree with Stephen, if we can avoid tabling it and come up with something, uh, that'd probably be better to move, move forward. Could you bring up the one that shows the the lots again?
Yeah.
Please.
Yep, it's coming, there it is.
And Phil, yeah, I know you're talking about, you know, the, this, does the city end at, uh, Rolling Road? Alamosa?
Alamosa, yes, sir.
So does Alamosa go past the house on the corner on the south side of Road L, I guess, or does Alamosa stop at, must go past the house?
Yeah, actually, Alamosa stops right at, uh, you see Rolling Road on that map, right where that parcel ends on that, that home site there? That's where the city limit is. This, this open parcel to the east on the south side of Alamosa, that just shows that one home site and the undeveloped land all around it. That's a 40-acre parcel that's not in the city limits, but we serve water to. And then there's Brandon's Boulevard right there on the far left of the image, and on the other side of that, there's a duplicate parcel, um, that Dan Hoak, uh, is developing right now, that we want to service that parcel, this portion, and this, uh, new development. Because this is logical progression, and we have water lines on, uh, if not, uh, on, on, on these parcels on two sides. On all three of these parcels, we have water lines on two sides, or are actually bisecting them. So these three make a logical progression for the city to serve, stop, and let Monazuma Val, you know, Monazuma Water Company, uh, you know, proceed with what they're doing in the county.
I, just real quick, I took a look at the participants list, and I see that the representative for the property is here as an attendee, is there any way to allow them to talk to us? To maybe clarify any questions that we've got here?
I guess I could call them to the podium and have them.
Yeah. The formalities of that is a little bit different with Zoom, I guess.
Do you want me to allow them both to talk?
How about one at a time?
Okay, who do you want to speak first? Got Jared Wyatt and Sean Florida here.
I think, I think the applicant is Jared Wyatt.
Alright, I'll let him talk.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Alright, awesome, thank you guys very much for allowing us, um, this platform and everything to speak about this, uh, subdivision that we've been working on, I do have the gentleman Jason Carruth with me that, um, that Phil was referencing earlier, that is, um, helping me with this project, and so I know that they've spoken a few times and a couple of emails back and forth. And so, yeah, we're just, um, you know, obviously trying to move forward with this subdivision, and just kind of, um, you know, learning, uh, what the ins and outs are here, we just found out Monday, kind of the situation here with the water. I was very aware of that city main water line running through the property, you know, like when I purchased it, and so not being like some, um, big-time developer myself, I mean, this is just kind of a, um, you know, first-time endeavor and stuff like that, so just trying to go about it the right way, doing things the right way, but I, I was aware that that was there, and just trying to work it out and figure out what the best, um, plan of action with that is, and so, um, I know we do have one question in particular, and that's more about the annexation, and what was the?
Um, the annexation is something that we would want to investigate if we are, if the whole property was to be annexed to the city, or is there a separate type of annexation for just providing water to that parcel or those parcels?
And, and I really just brought that up as a point to, not for this particular annexation, it's just an issue that this annexation brought to my attention, so I'm just, just letting you know that that's, you know, I'm not saying that you guys have to annex in, or that I even think that that's required, because I don't think it is at all, it's just, um, it's just something that happens a lot in most communities, but we don't have a mechanism for that here in Cortez, so, so don't feel like that, but that might be a cost estimate that, you know, cost benefit analysis you guys might want to do, because it is more expensive for water fees and taps for out-of-city residents, that's all.
Right, exactly, yes ma'am. But is there, but like to the question itself, though, just to clarify a little bit, just make sure we're on the same page, is there, um, like a separate annexation that would be like just a water, I guess, annexation, if we did go with the city water, is there that kind of, is that an option, or how does that look?
Phil, can you comment on that?
Well, yeah, I, yeah, it, there is not a, it's not, you're, you're annexing into the city, so it's, it's the whole nine yards, um, as opposed to just saying you're in our service area. Because we do have out-of-city services, um, you know, from, from where you are, all the way out to the water plant. And, and, uh, you know, if you're in adjacency like you are. And, and, uh, you know, if you're in adjacency like you are, this parcel is, there is a pre-annexation agreement. There's, there's a pre-annexation agreement, even if you're out in the middle of nowhere, just as a, it's just, you know, good faith kind of thing. So, yeah, it's just, it's, it's not like you're just gonna be annexing into a water district. It's, you become, that would become within the city proper.
Okay.
No, that would mean that the city would maintain the road through that subdivision then too, is that correct?
No, not right now, it's, uh, if, if, okay, well, if this was in the city and it was built to city standards, um, we would then, uh, take over it and maintain it, yes sir. But it's not, and, and right now, as this proposed, oh, we would just be asking for utilities and for the water line, and then, um, have that conveyed over to us on a plat, um, and with a legal description, and then we would just maintain and operate that system.
So Phil, the pre-annexation agreement doesn't necessarily mean that they're annexing the entire property to the, to the city proper, is what you're saying, right?
What I understand, 'cause this has never happened, I, I just know the, we've, we've gone through this gyration, that if in fact we wanted them to annex in, we could request that they annex in after the fact. If, and I, and I think, um, and I, I may be wrong in this, I think Tracy could speak to this, that if in fact we do ask for that, we have, we incur the cost of annexation. City does, like, we do the survey work, we do all the notices. You know, it'd be like any of the other enclaves in the city. If we wanted them to, uh, annex, it would be on us, uh, to do it.
Ultimately, though, that decision would be held with the property owner, correct?
Yes, the property owner and the council would work that out, yes sir.
Okay, thank you. So, so they, they get the final say, you, we can request it as City of Cortez, but they can say, no, thank you, we'll do the, the, the water service, the out of town service, basically.
You know, I don't know, uh, if that's true or not, Mr. Candelaria, I think that we can, and, and, uh, you know, Tracy and Niva, or even, um, Rebecca, I know that you're been in this business for a long time, um, and I, I don't have access to my J drive, I'm at home, like, but, uh, to pull that document out. But I think that we can, and that's why we incur the cost. Uh, let me look at that, I, I sent, let me, give me a second, I wanna look at this sent email.
Now, I'll just state, like, what I know about, um, there, there is a procedure that state law gives municipalities the ability to force annex a property, but there has to be a bunch of circumstances that are met, which aren't currently being met in this particular one. And that would be like, when you see a parcel that is a hundred percent surrounded by city, and it's, but there's like this weird lot that says it's in the county, because they're not, and they don't wanna pay city taxes, and they never went through the annexation procedure, but they're a hundred percent surrounded by the city, and cases like that, or I think it's actually up to sixty percent contingency. The city could do a forced annexation, and it would be on the city incurring all the costs. And there would, you know, it's also highly unpopular move that I've never seen, a municipality in Colorado undertake, because it's, it's, it tends to be seen as overreach, and it's just kind of a hostile maneuver. A pre-annexation agreement, if they're tying into a city utility that is outside, and, and they're outside of the city, is, is pretty common, and it's just saying like, you know, if at some point we decide to annex, we'll build it up to the standards that the city requires. And that's, that's for any, any potential property that, that is considering an annexation, um, and wants to go through a subdivision process, or not considering it, but wants to tie into a city utility, from what I understand.
Okay.
This is Tracy, I'm just, the city can only annex without, um, can only force annex if it's totally an enclave.
Okay. And then the.
Looking for.
Yeah, the pre-annexation agreement, my understanding is it just basically says, you know, if, if you sign this pre-annexation agreement, you, you know, you will allow yourself to be annexed if at any point the city needs to annex you. And I think a main reason for that would be, you know, if you're, you know, kind of blocking other property owners from getting water service, that, you know, is a time when I could see the city wanting to play that card. I don't necessarily think the City of Cortez is, is actively going to start annexing all those people with the pre-annexation agreements on file. I, I've not heard of us doing that yet, I could be wrong, but, um, but it does give you, you know, the city that option.
Tracy? Tracy, do you know, uh, if we make that a requirement in the, in the, in the plat that's signed, or if, if, if we do have the, if that's how we vote, is it enforceable, you know what I'm saying, I guess? Can the property owners sign it? The county, well, the county, I guess what I'm asking is, if it's signed and the county approves our suggestion, right, do they have to approve it?
They have to approve, uh.
Like if we say, we will, we'll provide the water, but we want a pre-annexation agreement, if, can the county just delete that?
Um, well, you know, it's, it's kind of complicated, 'cause if, you know, if we're serving, if the applicant agreeing to get the city water, then they have to sign the pre-annexation agreement. And technically, counties by the state law are required to have proof of water and sewer and access before they can, you know, approve the subdivision. So how the county interprets that, you know, is, is not, I don't know how they check that box necessarily. So, to me, if, you know, if the applicant is, is amenable to just getting their pre-annexation agreement signed, and the city council approves providing the water taps, because they ultimately have to make a motion on that, then they've got proof of water, and the county can approve the subdivision. I guess the county could look for an alternative water source if they don't wanna go with that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, kinda.
Right, and the, and I'm, you know, the access to the road also, to me, is a piece that needs to be clarified.
Right.
So I, yeah, I don't. So as if the county wants to interpret water service, that's up to them.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from Jared?
Mr. Chairman, it, it, I know that, uh, you and, and, um, Commissioner Candelaria are not in favor of tabling this i- issue, but it seems to me like there's still too many questions to be answered for us to move forward.
If I may, um, we've actually got an estimate from Monizuma Water to run the water line from where it exists, so, closer to Road 26, Long Road L, and to run it through the subdivision. This just came about when, um, it was presented to the city, planning and zoning, um, as part of being close to the city, and in the city's, uh, venue, that the water thing came up and changed. So we actually, basically, should have water from anywhere. We've already got, uh, and actually, the lot that isn't outlined on the far west of the property, we've already paid, um, the five hundred dollar fee, it says that we've got water guaranteed there, and would be doing the same for the rest of these lots, until the city water, um, became an option for us. So that's what we're looking at, and as far as the road coming in and hitting Alamosa Street, as soon as it heads north off Alamosa, it'd be county property, and we had spoken with, um, Rob Inglehart at the Roden Bridge, and he said as long as we did everything to the county standards, which is a sixty foot easement with a twenty-four foot road, and then that hammerhead kind of cul-de-sac there, it would have an eight, one hundred and eighteen foot diameter, so, um, emergency vehicles, fire trucks and stuff can turn around, that, uh, everything would be pretty much approved by, um, the county road department. So we would have to go through the city, and we had thought it was gonna be called Road L instead of Alamosa there. It ends, I mean, basically, within eighty yards, fifty yards of there. So we weren't sure if it was gonna be a county project or a city project, but of course, it's at the edge of both, so we needed to coordinate with the city also. Um, we would be ready to, you know, do the permits and perform it to the standards, uh, to put in the right road. And like I said, as far as water goes, we've got it from two different places. And, you know, city water is the direction that we're looking. But we did have questions about the annexation.
Hey, Tom, could I add something?
Sure.
Okay, uh, with regards, uh, you know, Mr. Wyatt did talk about the county road standards, and that's true. You know, the only things that are really outliers for us are, uh, you know, the road alignment, like Mr. Candelaria mentioned, uh, the water supply and the road access. The water supply would be dealt with, would be handled through council with the pre-annexation agreement, as you did. You know, you're aware of being on council. And the tie-in to the road will be handled through Public Works Department and Engineering. So, a- and we're not gonna let this ball fall through the, you know, the cracks in any way. And I, I did wanna point out that that one house that is in the parcel that is surrounded by the hayfield, that one house that's right by the road, and and lots here, that is actually served by city water as well. So, um, uh, you know, we, we, the mechanisms are in place to make sure that, you know, this is adequately served and, and, um, you know, policies are there for, uh, out of city taps. So I feel confident that we can, you know, address those issues, those two specific issues, which is water and then the road tie-in. Um, and really, for me, uh, because it's out of the city and out of our jurisdiction, that's really all we have to be concerned about.
Okay, if you're, well, if you're comfortable with it, all right.
So devil's advocate, if for some reason city council said, no, we're not gonna allow you to access Alamosa Street, uh, would that kind of be a deal breaker for that subdivision? Not that it would happen, just, you know, just kind of throwing that out there.
No, I mean, obviously, we would just have to get, you know, a little creative, where as far as we're looking at it, that's just kind of, um, for line of sight distance, and, um, just a, a natural tie-in, it kind of works for the subdivision itself, but we have other options on the west side down there with, um, getting into the subdivision. It's just right at that, you know, that single house right there, that Phil referenced, that is, um, already being serviced by the city water. You know, there's just kind of a, a natural hill that kind of drops right there, so the sight distance right there is not, not, um, you know, not great, so we've taken all that into consideration. Once you kind of get past, it would be west of that property, of that single house right there. And so, um, but, you know, we could put an access road, you know, further there to the west off of Road L, if that's what it comes down to.
Okay, I was just throwing that out there for you.
Yeah, I mean, and pretty much, yeah, it was a great question, but, um, pretty much just picture, we would just flip that, right, we would just flip that access, put our hammerhead on the east side and, and go from there.
Okay.
So, I mean, for me personally, I think it's in conformance with the master streets plan, and, and like Phil said, there are the mechanisms within that, if they so choose to move forward with city water, then there, there are the mechanisms there, and I, I think that we need to, to, to move forward as such.
You wanna put down a motion?
Sure, Niva, do you mind putting up that alternative motion? Thank you. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to authorize the P and Z chairman to sign the plat of the eight lot subdivision located at 26833 Road L, with signature block number one for compliance with the master streets plan with the following conditions, that if the applicant so chooses to move forward with city water, that city council must approve the out of city water taps and pre-annexation agreement for the subdivision, and the subdivision must obtain any necessary permits to access the city-owned Alamosa Street.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Well, my motion will die if it's not seconded, so I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion to second, any further discussion, anybody might?
Yeah, I just don't like the "if the applicant so chooses" language, because I believe the, um, boundaries for water servicing are, and especially with Monizuma Water, are, are dictated by, I, I mean, they're dictated, they're not, it's not, I don't know, if something's in a service area, isn't it required to be serviced by the service that's, it's in the service area? Just, I know I'm talking about things that are patchwork, but it just seems to me like it makes a lot of good sense in planning that they would tie into city water, rather than having a patchwork and having to extend something a lot further away, um, to meet their needs, that could create issues in the future. Phil?
So your, your concern, Rebecca, is if they choose, is that the?
That, yeah, that if.
Sorry about that, I didn't know you were addressing that to me, I was looking at a map.
Get back here.
Sorry.
I'm just, I'm just being a wordsmith, and, and I, 'cause it ends up, that words do matter a lot.
You know, and I don't disagree with that, in that, um, it just leaves it dangling, and, uh, you know, what, from my perspective is, you know, we've already worked out this, uh, the water situation is a done deal, as far as I'm concerned. I, I feel like I have a good faith discussion with the developer. I had a good faith discussion with Monizuma Water Company, and I'm ready to move forward with these, you know, these guys can fill out their documents and give them to the city council, and we can go to a council meeting and, and just get this done, and then we can talk about the road. I have this, uh, let me, uh, I have this court, this map that I can zoom in and show you real quick. If you really wanna look at this area, 'cause you keep talking about service areas, and I just wanted to, you know, demonstrate to you that this is in fact, like a no man's land.
Well, if I'm understanding you right, Phil, uh, the words "if they so choose" is sort of a mute point.
Right, yeah, just, yeah.
I'm just curious why the developer would have a quote for Monizuma Water if they were intending to move forward with City of Cortez water?
Well, because they initially started their application getting water service from them. Um, and then when this packet came to us from Monizuma County last week, is when this discussion internally teed off, and that's why I feel like, you know, and, and I, I appreciate Mr. Wyatt not, you know, saying that we're slowing down things for him, because, you know, we haven't even had this for, uh, five business days. So, um, yeah, I, I feel like they just did that because they didn't, you know, they didn't, they didn't reach out to us, and they didn't know. They didn't know the, the dynamics of what we're talking about with regards to service area and gray area between those areas. So, um, yeah, I, I, and I do agree that, uh, you know, it should not be an if, but that they do get the water from the city, and then they, they must comply with those two, you know, the pre-annexation as well as the out of city water tap, application.
Can you share that map at all? Is that what you're trying to do?
I can't, 'cause Niva's, oh, are you done sharing, Niva? Yeah, okay, let me show this. Okay, can you guys see that?
Not yet.
You see, you started.
Okay, all right, give me a second.
There we go.
All right.
Let me know when you can see it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, this little green, uh, see this little green nodule right there? That's that single family home in the middle of that hayfield. Uh, this is Rolling Road, and of course, this is, you know, that water line, and we're talking about bisecting, but that's a transmission line, and we don't wanna tap into that, we wanna tap into this main along L. Um, if you'll know, the green hashing is city service area, the red is, uh, known Monizuma Water Company service area, and these white areas are the, are the no man's land. They're the ones in between the service areas. And so, um, this parcel here to the, to the north of L, that, that hayfield does not go, uh, Mr. Wyatt's property does not go all the way into that white service area. It's all about, it, it goes about to where my cursor's going back and forth there. And, um, and I talked to, uh, Mr. Bowman, and, and I really have no interest in north of that, unless he doesn't wanna service that, 'cause I have this other transmission line that goes, uh, that slants in the same angle from down to the southwest that could potentially service the area, but I was really only wanting to address this immediate, uh, development and those two squares, uh, around on the other side of Brandon's Boulevard.
So again, back to my point, the words, if the developer chooses, um, is sort of a mute point.
Well, I think it just convolutes it, I, I think that, you know, as opposed to just saying that you wanna do this, let's do that, as, and then, i- i- instead of leaving it as open-ended, and then they go to the, the county, and who knows what kind of, you know, how this may divert and muddy up the water, um, as opposed to saying, we are getting water from the city, we are moving forward, and then they can just tee that off the box.
And from what. From what I saw based on that map, it looks like the existing parcel unsubdivided, half of it is already in the city's service area. So that, and then the other's half is no man's land. So to me, that seems to bind-
Yes.
-entire subdivision at this point.
So we have a motion on the floor. And I guess we can seek to amend the motion.
I, I will amend the motion.
Yes. Now we have to vote on the amendment. So I would move to amend.
I'll, I'll second the, the movement to amend. Thank you for considering my perspective.
And so the amendment, the motion to amend is the wording, strike the wording, if developer chooses, or whatever was up there on the screen.
Basically going back to the original motion that Niva had typed up.
So we have a motion and then a second on the floor to amend the original motion. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Let's proceed to meet or vote on the amendment then. And that's where Lynn, or Cheryl, you'll need to call a roll call for the amendment.
Okay. Butler?
Yes.
Candelaria?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Oh, yes, yes.
No, you just get to vote once.
Levy?
Yes.
And Remy?
Yes, now we'll vote on the original motion as amended.
Basically what's on the screen, right?
I believe so. My screen gets so small when that happens. The words "if so chooses" or whatever is out of there, so. Yes, the original motion would be what's up on the screen.
Cheryl, do I need to repeat that? Just, is that easier for you, or?
No, that, no, not unless you want to. I've got it here.
Okay, if you've got it, I don't need to repeat it.
Okay. McDaniel?
Any discussion on that? There are no other discussion on that motion. Let's proceed to vote.
Okay. McDaniel?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Candelaria?
Yes.
And Remy?
Yes. And all this is a motion to sign it and send it on over to the county, is that correct?
To, to the council.
Doesn't this go-
Yeah, I'll shut up, sorry.
Yeah. So Jared, did you get all that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that looks like the last item of business. Any citizen participation? I guess hearing and seeing no hands raised or whatever, go on to-
We, we do have a attendee that may want to participate and isn't aware of how. I just want to make sure, because I, I'm not sure why that person's attending. Sorry to interrupt, but, I guess Sean Flaherty, do you know how to raise your hand if you want to participate? Yeah, I see a hand up, so just want to make sure if he wants to, he can participate. Now the hand's gone.
His hand left?
It did. I'm not sure if that was a never mind or not, but.
I believe Sean is working with Jared and Colette on the subdivision.
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
And, and thanks again for indulging my belaboring of a point. I apologize for being annoying. But I think, I, I appreciate your perspective too, Stephen. So I'm, I'm sorry if I come off too strong.
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely. I'm, it doesn't bother me at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no hands raised, other than maybe waving goodbye. Next is the P&amp;Z discussion at Master Street Plan update. Tracy, Niva, who's going to give us any updates?
This is Tracy. So kind of very last minute last week, we had a meeting to talk about the master street plan. And we have gone ahead and advertised in the water bills that we are going to have two public meetings by Zoom on February 17th and February 20th for the master street plan, basically for folks to look at our draft and, and make comment and just learn what it is. So we're going to be rolling out notices in a variety of shapes and sizes here very, very shortly. So that's our update. The map and the text haven't changed since the last time you saw them, but we are now officially moving forward with public outreach. And I believe that the 17th meeting is at 5:30 PM and the 20th meeting is at 10 AM. That's a Saturday.
And so is that your office that hosts the meetings?
Correct. Yeah, it'll be like this one. Presentation than a, than a panel of people.
Are, are those maps and map layers and stuff all online and available for the public already?
As soon as we flip the switch, they are.
Yeah, they're not right yet, but it's ready to go.
So they, they did a little demonstration at the city workshop, work session, right? Which was really interesting and helpful. So I'm definitely going to play around with that once it's live.
One, one quick question. I know that you mentioned that we're sending these out via the water bills, but how are we going to notify stakeholders that don't get a City of Cortez water bill?
Well, that's, that's our strategy of Facebook, public notice in the newspaper, city website, news flash, and I think we're, we're meeting tomorrow actually to nail all the, those are the ones that are for sure happening. And then any other ideas will be thrown on the table tomorrow at a meeting. But that's kind of the standard fare, you know, probably a flyer. I don't know what good flyers do these days with nobody going out in public, but we'll probably post the flyer at city hall and the library where I don't think people are allowed to go.
Tracy, what about the county? I thought the county was gonna, they had their own program coming out as well.
I don't know, that's not on my radar.
And we are going to be bringing John Brooks into the mix. Stephen, our, our marketing manager, and he has his fingers on all that electronic media and social outlets. And, and I think that, you know, we'll also be making use of our sound bites with KSJD. And we have those Monizuma news monitors on various buildings in the city and the airport. So we're just gonna, you know, all those things that Tracy mentioned, and then bring John in to bring his perspective and knowledge based on, on the outreach.
Does that mean press releases to try and get the newspaper to actually do a story?
Yeah, that's a great idea. And we should, we'll talk, we'll bring that up tomorrow, man.
And, and, and don't think that I'm trying to be overbearing in regard to public outreach. I just want to make sure that we give everybody every opportunity to know about this. That way, if they want to learn more about it, have their comments heard type of deal. They really, truly, we did our due diligence and gave our best effort to do so, so they can't come back and say, well, you're trying to sneak this new three-mile plan in on us. No, we can say, like y'all said, everything that you've laid out sounds excellent. But again, I think that if we go above and beyond in regard to that, then it's, it's, it shows good faith on our side to make sure that we're really trying to get the key stakeholders involved here.
I, I totally agree with you, Stephen. And there's a way that you can have the mail, the post office send out like a mailbox mailer, they call it, so you don't have to have specific addresses. But basically, you can draw a radius around the city and you can draw three miles and go like, I want this postcard delivered to every mailbox in this radius. And they can just automatically do it on their delivery routes. It's a service I've used in the past to kind of help reach people outside of city limits that I don't have addresses for, but, you know, I'm able to pull that. I mean, you could actually pull their addresses out of the county GIS map if you wanted to too, and do just a postcard with an invitation and a link to the, you know, having the website and what the three-mile plan briefly might be that, you know. It's a, it's a pretty effective, I mean, it's not the greatest strategy, but it, there are a lot of people who do not use Facebook.
Right.
What?
I know.
I'm one of them.
I need to be one of them.
I, I just, I like what Phil said about hitting the radio. I think, I think everybody listens to the radio in some way, shape or form as well, so.
Okay, well, if anybody has any specific recommendations, get them to Tracy or Niva and, you know, they can follow up on it.
Yeah. And instead of just taking a couple approaches, like, just like as many as you can probably is within budget is the best way to do it.
It won't be enough, I promise.
Right?
That's what I was going to say. Maybe you ought to consider some personal invitations to a few people.
Would you like me to show up at their house?
Okay, moving on.
Sandwich board on Main Street.
Like I said, if you have ideas, get them to Tracy. Number six says you should have building permits for January. Number seven, any other items of pertinent business? Any previous business, even though it's misspelled? Typing teacher, that popped right up. Comments, good for the cause.
It is spelled.
Yeah, I know. I was entertaining most of you, but Jared.
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second? I think Tom seconded it.
You bet.
Cheryl, go ahead and have a roll call.
Vote for that, all right. Levy?
Yeah.
Butler?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Candelaria?
Yes.
And Remy, 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 Remy.
I'll remember that, Cheryl. Yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Phil.
Good night.
Robert, before you leave, is there any chance you can come down to city hall and sign some plats?
Yeah. For some, is city hall back to being open?
Mm-hmm, yes, we are.
Regular business hours.
Okay, yeah, I've got a meeting at 10:00, so maybe I'll try to get down there before that meeting and sign stuff and-
Okay, all right, yeah, that'd be great, because we have to hear a couple plats waiting.
Okay, just make sure it's a good sharpie and I sign in the right place.
All right.
Take care, everybody.
All right, see you.
Bye.
All right. Bye, everyone.
Bye, Niva.